All right, we will open the planning board meeting for Tuesday, December thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. It is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. If anybody is recording, that is fine. You just need to let us know. Okay, um, this will be recorded and it will be placed on the planning board website for anyone to view at a later time. All right.
Try to block that down.
All right, seven o'clock town planners reports.
Okay, thank you very much. A handful of business items we share with the board. Um, for everyone's information, a report date for the um, one on one point road zoning violations related to the lease of both slips in that property has been set for January tenth.
You know where?
I apologize, I don't, you know, there are some factors that just don't here significant to me despite the fact that I believe I'm expected to attend.
And so figure out where to tap. So I have. They show up.
I've been asked to alongside the building inspector. Uh, so I will be happy to share further detail as it becomes available. Okay. Uh, I received a brief email uh, from Mr. Val Shavitz regarding seventy-two more binding rope. That's the former um land of Park Pinell. Um, that acreage adjacent to uh, proposed the subdivision as Edmond is the moment there, but uh, the email essentially is saying uh, that he intends to remove the land from chapter sixty-one uh, from the chapter system program. Let us let him know if you have any questions. Um, we reviewed this property in terms of its value um, for preservation, whether or not it hit the priority list back in February um, of this year, and the determination was that it did not land on the town's priority list uh, as advised to the planning board is not when that list was developed. I only bring it up today just for everyone understanding what that step is. I do have some questions that may not necessarily be my specific concern as town planner, but I think the form of notification probably isn't adequate to satisfy uh, his obligation under the program requirements. Uh, so I will share that uh, with the town administrator and uh, we'll see if he needs to um, in that form of notice, um, but I presume there's no inclination just yet uh, from the planning board to to reclassify that property as priority uh, for town council.
You have a copy of the list?
Somewhere. Yeah, I'm very, I'm impressed that you have one on you.
I just happened to find it today going through a bunch of stuff. And there's nothing on more finding.
Well, if you don't mind, uh, Mr. Phelps, I will happily take a copy of that list before we part ways today, just so that I know.
This was from uh, October two thousand and sixteen.
It's a.
It's a while ago.
But that means it's been dead. Um, so terrific. Just want to give everyone uh, that piece of direct news. Uh, I sat down with William Smith and his partner Susan Nelson regarding seventy-nine more binding road. The nine more binding road is an is a vacant piece of property that is one of three that has access from more running road via a common driveway. This is the only property of the three that was not built upon. And so Mr. Smith's base is a certain um, conundrum in that without uh, any use of the property, well, proven to the property having taken place and the only monumented actions being conservation driven. There was a a lawsuit between the developer and the town. Uh, the ultimate outcome was okay, conservation says you're going to build your driveway in this sort of fashion. Uh, through extensive uh, research here in a DPW. And over the summer, when a prospective buyer had a approached me, some questions that your bylaw says you can't have more than two houses on a common driveway. This one is the third. Um, we dug around, uh, found an opinion letter uh, from Vicki Nelson uh, and the previous um consultant or firm, I should say, representing the town. And they note that well, common driveways aren't permitted under the town's bylaw. Uh, so it's not eligible for all the protection of pre-existing non-conforming. I think there's a certain, I suppose, perspective that we all have that uh, common driveways on a case-by-case basis were being allowed. Um, I looked for a curb cut or something that would just acknowledge the town saying, okay, yes. Three lots, this location, uh, we weren't able to find anything. That's a lot of background on what took place over the summer, but uh, essentially if that if someone were to put in for a building for my application that's like leaning for our review, um, and I know this problem uh, that you, this is lot number three. And I don't have anything to further justify prior acknowledgement to the two thousand and fifteen by law. Uh, so anyways, he did get a legal opinion from Brad Moyer, which talks about um, you know, potentially pursuing uh, variance um, or filing um a lawsuit against the town, just spinning on a couple of different options. They didn't want to share that. The one piece of new information that I got out of this particular meeting was that underground uh, telecommunications and electrical services were brought to the property. So there are service boxes in that property. It sits essentially closer to more binding road than the ones in the rear. Uh, whether or not that's enough to qualify for that some pre-existing non-conforming condition that would allow this to uh, move through. It is something I'm going to have to lean on uh, town council for further uh, discussion. Um, this remains, I'm going to call it generally the same uh, piece of information that we've ground up and I've spoken with uh, Mark Reglan about in the past. Again, that that uh, that the electrical and telecommunications insurance is only real new piece of information alongside the opinion letter from Brad Myers office that I'll be sharing with him.
Where's the third property going?
So there's, I believe it's.
The left one going to the right, going straight.
Uh, I'm, if we are looking at the driveway servicing those three properties, uh, there's two out to the rear. This may be the furthest one north.
So up here.
What's that address again?
Or no?
Seven, seven, nine.
One, two, and three.
Also, it's one short here.
So the, this is, I would call that's generally speaking, the the third lot. The weather resource area is close to the uh, frontage. The driveway sweeps past and adjacent to the property. Um, there's some upward area towards the western extent of that property.
But there's all, there's wetlands issues in the front.
Yes.
Which has the, which has the frontage?
Um, they all have, uh, which one has the access? I don't recall which.
Yeah, that's what I.
If it's the, if it's, uh, let's just say seventy-five or seventy-seven, which problem, we call which one?
Okay.
Okay, so I'm sorry, that's kind of a, uh, it's a puzzle, um. Trying to make sure that the right uh, thing is done. All right, uh, let's look at the one by the name of Tinesha. Uh, she'd like to open a, uh, I'm gonna pull the takeaway, take-home food um, sales uh, establishment over at um five thirty-five College Highway. That's the uh, the subway and pest control plaza right there. In my opinion, this is a retail oriented use. There's no seating for uh, consuming uh, food or beverage on at the property. Um, I advise her that she might have to investigate uh, improvements that would be required for the sanitary service uh, as a, as a food preparation facility, you might be looking at a grease trap. Uh, or there may be other uh, inter- interior options depending on the nature of our operation.
Would you be going into the old subway?
No, no, it's a different unit, uh, in that apartment that she's gone to. So, uh, as a site plan review component, I think it's appropriate to the board at least understand any change of use uh, at the building as it relates to available parking. But uh, we're walking through uh, advising her for the next steps um, at that uh, at that site. Frank Gorilla owns the uh, the V F former former VFW, excuse me, of our Point Road Road, um, also resides in town. Uh, everyone may recall uh, him dividing some parcels off um, at the rear. I think that's two states avenue, perhaps um, that sweeps around behind it. Uh, the question uh, was asked, well, what's it going to take for a boat storage facility? So that's our one at the rear of that. Hardly has some accommodations for boating and some recreational uses um, associated with the with the lakes. I think storage, commercial storage probably take a step further. So I will be uh, walking through my um, we'll go critical path steps um uh, with Mr. Go, let him know that uh.
So is that our twenty or business by right? I know there's some business zowing along that uh, that point Grove.
That's right, but I think the rear acreage um, uh, of that property is kind of letting is in
So it's in not actually the VFW.
That's.
Parking area there.
That's correct. Um, so we'll, we will dig in and see if there's any option uh, that could be uh, pursued through his own shape. And my, my thoughts on that. Uh, last thing I note that I spoke with uh, Tom Flopman, he's uh, he runs a farm um out of Westfield and uh, which also utilizes land, or should say, he also farms here in the south, but um. So he's investigating uh, what options there may be for farm labor camp um, to be actually struck at one of those properties. Uh, we don't drill into that degree of specificity um, to talk about that specific use, I should say, uh, in our and I was uh, so there's a, we call it careful navigation between what I require in um, what rights are provided um, for farming practices and their state law um, and their accessory uses out of property.
Would that be grand policy? Cause it used to be constant ups on that land on North Long Yard.
Uh, well.
Of course.
Yeah, I, I imagine we're talking, I'm sorry.
Like an out of use for.
Uh, there's nothing at the site of this particular uh, moment. It's my cursory understanding uh, that frankly, the state law won't says that there, that the town shall not require um, special permits for other onerous zoning um burdens uh, to be or hoops to be jumped through uh, for those types of uses that their protections are in place, but I want to be careful about my uh, book out language. And responding with some thought, he said, you can understand what to, what to expect uh, before the planning board moving forward.
I think I have a paper on that too.
Yeah.
Because we went.
The timing of this meeting.
And we went through it with uh, Mr. Arnold on College Highway crossing the new cemetery. He had a camp, had a camp down in there.
Okay.
As I recall, and for some reason, you know, something was going on with it. I don't know what, but I'll take that out.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I think Tom's got a lot of property over there, so I know which piece he's talking about.
I don't know the specific property. I know it has frontage along uh, North Long Yard uh, and the portion that he was looking to construct on uh, within the residential district.
You didn't even have that bag on parchment, Marcus?
What's that now?
Do you have anything in that bag on parchment?
Probably. I think I've got a copy of the Constitution.
I like.
Valuable. Uh, no.
Yes. That's it, everybody. Thank you uh, for entertaining the discussion.
Thank you, Jim.
That's very good. Seven oh five public comment. Anybody have anything for the board tonight that is um, not on the agenda? Hey. Seven ten P M. Special permits, site plan approval, well, head protection district special permit, earth excavation special permit and stormwater management permit for additional added public storage at one Hudson Drive continued public hearing. All right, uh, John, you're, yeah, you're on. All right, um, so I will. Is there anything to read in? Other than to note that conservation has resolved their application.
No, I don't think I would be further uh, information to report. Uh, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong about the last uh, meeting. I think you quickly acknowledged the changes uh, related to DPW's um, response letter and then DPW's uh, acknowledgement that those were static factors.
That's all right. Yep, that is uh, exactly how I understood. We left things uh, and again, we left it open, as you mentioned uh, because conservation had not had a chance to review the project. Actually, we had just recently filed a notice of intent. Um, and as you, and as you said, last week, they uh, closed the public hearing and it's my understanding they are drafting the order of conditions uh, for the project. So that's where it stands at the moment.
Okay, um, so we still have to defer it to the next meeting to finalize. Um, they haven't issued a decision yet. As far as anything that may need to end up on a site plan?
Uh, there, there was nothing mentioned about any sort of conditions that would uh, require any changes that you know, there was, they, it was pretty straightforward. They didn't really have any uh, comments uh, when they saw that Randy Brown had sort of given his blessing. They were, they were satisfied with that. So uh, there's nothing of, uh, nothing of note that needs to be added or changed on the plans.
I uh, checked with Sabrina Fuller, the conservation coordinator, and that's what she reported as well, but frankly, uh, once uh, people have used comments were satisfied. Uh, there were, wasn't anything further that they were asking for.
Okay, um, and all of that has been reflected on the updated site plan that's been submitted with this application.
That is correct.
All right, any um questions or comments from the board? Okay, and Sutton has recused himself. Um, so Jessica, the voting member. Um, any questions or comments from town officials? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, um. John Thomas, I actually want you to state your name and business for the record so that we have it on there, John.
Sure, uh, John Tomaszewski with Arlo Beck Associates.
Okay, uh, did you have anything else you needed to add for the public hearing?
Uh, no, I just wanted to report back what uh, what the status was and we sort of went over that. So we're good. I'm good.
All right, uh, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Retalting your second.
Your role card vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Retalting your eye.
Dave's been a I.
Just the thought and I.
Okay, um, so we'll um, um draft up a decision and um, vote on it at our next meeting, which is the third, January third. So um, so it'll be put on for routine business at the next meeting and voted on at the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
It is. Take care.
A lot harder work.
Takes frustrating, but three months.
Like working on an old car.
Please.
Every bolt's gonna break.
All right, so do you fix the car?
I'll take it.
I can uh.
Biggie's outside.
What's that? Are you talking about depot next? I'll just go out and have Dave come in.
And tag team.
Yep.
But I don't think we're doing anything on this one. Don't go far.
Oh. People like the storage. Public storage, public storage.
I'm sorry, they got five stories high.
Yeah, wow.
Well, of course, only as a solid, I think they're.
No. Well, public storage is they, you know, it's interesting business.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I wanted to do it. But of course, I'm going to do it myself.
Where was?
At the pine gear.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
I already had it twelve page device here.
Did you get coffee during it?
They just, they didn't get the truck started.
We were about to call the police.
Yeah.
Back you down.
Oh, no, not again. I mean.
Tag team.
Actually, no, we weren't calling them at all. We didn't miss you.
Thanks, buddy. Maybe he's not afraid to show up.
People.
I am, but we can keep um, depot, why don't you give us the update on depot square?
Depot Square, let's see, uh, so the request is for a reduction in the stormwater uh, performance fund. Uh, so the well, the developers consultant, Arlo Beck Associates has submitted an ASB Plan reflecting the improvements of the property. Uh, Randy at DPW has some concerns with uh, the depiction or I should say the accuracy um, of the water system out there, uh, because the water system does remain uh, in some measure responsibility of the town. Uh, at least in terms of its integrity and how the rest of the system is uh, is protected. Uh, so uh, an effort was made to locate um the water main um, and then have the ASB plan updated. Uh, so that's one right there that I believe is taking place and they sent a provisional back to Randy. Uh, Mr. Lebec uh, noticed has shared some correspondence, uh, outgoing correspondence to the homeowners association because part of this discussion um, has to do with, I'm going to say, closeout of the permitting and then construction process um, out there. So while the stormwater component, there's a few um, Mitchell Levesque asked for some records uh, that relate to maintenance since the turnover uh, of responsibilities to the homeowners association economy, one such that said. Uh, but a related offshoot from all this um has to do with the change in the uh, quantity of tree plantings um, that were installed versus what was originally shown on the approved plans. I don't think there's much dispute uh, over or or much resistance towards what has been installed. It seems appropriate for the site. Um, it is reasonably open, you're in shade and things are growing. But I think that monumenting that change and perhaps bringing it before the planning board um, to acknowledge is part of this full family discussion. So anyways, I advanced for a few seconds too long on that particular topic. Uh, there is uh, activity in the background. We'll keep it on our agenda as a discussion item, but nothing uh new to present as the, in terms of the request for the seat. Good deal.
Okay. Routine business, Hillside Road, Meadow Lane, it's that estate lot special permit written decision. Okay. Um. I assume there has not been an agreement?
No.
I'm assuming correctly.
Correct.
Okay. So, um. So, um, we've gone through the decision. We went back in November. Went through it, cleaned it up. Have it in a place where all we need to do is add conditions, I believe, if any. The applicant and the abutting property owners have been discussing potentially an agreement. It, and we continued it off last meeting to allow them more time to figure that out. Uh, that hasn't come to fruition. So, um.
No chance?
My suggestion at this point in time. Um. Can I explain it? Uh, no, this, we're doing this. This is the deliberation of the board for the written decision. I, I fully understand now, probably to some degree suggests some of what was talked about to my understanding, um, at least. Um, but you know, I think there is my understanding of some of what's come out of the discussions for the board to talk about. Um, I think which we've already talked about, but just to, I think reasonable to put on the table at this point in time is, is having a a buffer basically. So the front, the front of the property. It's two hundred and something feet to come back to the hundred-foot buffer for the wetlands. So behind where the um, and I don't know if you have it there, John, but um behind where the houses, so comes in off a meadow. Goes over to the right, house is there. Um. And if you go sort of directly behind the house, you end up hitting wetlands at some point. Um, it's about two hundred and change, two hundred thirty, two forty, two whatever, to that a hundred-foot buffer from the wetlands, from the property line, which is basically a straight line um, of the abutting properties on Meadow. Um, and so, you know, I think the board discussed it, but also I think the abutting property owners and the applicant were discussing sort of a buffer of two hundred feet or so, which would allow for placement of an outbuilding, you know, just past the two hundred feet so that you wouldn't get into that hundred-foot buffer of the wetlands, which I think is appropriate. And but in that two hundred-foot buffer, you know, no farm animals, no farm animal outbuildings. Nothing to be built in that area. Um, it's sort of separate from the Meadow Lane properties to where the animals are kept on this property.
What's the foot distance currently of the outbuilding suggested by the site?
I, my understanding, so see that line right behind the outbuilding? That is the hundred-foot buffer for the wetlands. So I think when you hit that line, you're at about two thirty. So the two hundred-foot buffer uh, basically runs between the uh, proposed garage and the outbuilding. Yeah.
So the two hundred-foot buffer is already complied with basically then on the site.
I'm, I'm buying it, yeah. It's complied with on the proposed site plan, uh, as far as a as far as a, yeah, as far as a proposed buildings, it's not on there as a condition or, you know, specified requirement on the plan. But as far as practical, practically speaking, it would all be outside of.
That was my impression.
Correct.
Make sure.
Um. Um, no, I mean, I think this would add, you know, I mean, obviously you would have some fencing or containment anyways for the animals, but I think this would sort of delineate where that would be, right? You'd have to keep the animals away from that two hundred-foot buffer so they'd be you, you would, you would.
If you were to build a farmyard uh, off of the outbuilding, it would need to be in the rear as opposed to
Or the side, or it could even be the front, but it, you know, it just would be, it's not up by the house or it's not in the side yard inside the front. All right, um. You know. You know, you have the estate lot. Requirements of personal use only, you know, but you can put that in the permit so that runs with the land that they're only allowed to use. Uh, it's for, it's an estate lot permit, so it's for personal use only. Um, you put that in the permit. Um, and you know, that prevents any commercial use. In that property going forward, whether it's. Remains like this, whether it gets put into chapter sixty-one in some way. I mean, it can't be then turned into a commercial use in some way. And come off of that.
Do it for marketing.
Um. Um.
So where's the two hundred feet measured from?
See, I mean, see that line up. For, you know, there's no.
Property line?
There's no jog in that property line. That's pretty much a straight line, I think, going over. You can see Mr. Philios's property to the left of the cul-de-sac. You can see the three. Properties.
Yeah.
On Stagecoach.
Yeah.
Um. Parentella.
So there's a measurement here of fifty feet.
Marcus. Uh. That trapezoid at the curb cut. The drive entrance, uh, parallel with step back mine, that's two hundred feet, um. Which from either corner.
Just if you want something to.
This line right here?
This section right here, that's dimensioned at two hundred. So if we take that.
What are you saying? The bottom of the trapezoid? The triangle is two hundred percent.
Um.
So we're just conditioning what can be done within that two hundred feet buffer.
Correct.
Okay.
So John, you say it's two hundred feet from. Property line to that. Horizontal line, or are you saying the base of the triangle? Is two hundred feet.
The base of that triangle.
This right here, this distance. So he's saying you take that and turn it. And put it. Yeah, it's basically little ways.
I'll stay there, yeah.
Driveway.
Got it. Thank you. Okay.
Right. I mean, that's what it. Yeah. You're coming from a straight line, so it's pretty straightforward that you just kind of. Come down and. Box it out. Um.
So. Why two hundred and not one fifty? Is there any number in particular you're. We're working with?
Um, I think that that, um, sort of creates a divider between the house area and the. You know, back area, right? I mean, I think the two hundred hits. Basically about where that. Driveway is just past that driveway. The, um.
The driveway near the house.
What is this, which, which?
Yeah, you have a box on your, on your.
Straight up on this one, so. Um, the, the south of that driveway.
Eight.
Yeah, eighty feet to an inch, right? So, um. So.
Well, we should use your screen then. Share your screen and then we actually see.
No, because it's not, it's not, it's not a. Actual measurement.
Oh, it's not an actual.
But, um.
Oh, John's moving.
So. You see where that four oh five?
Yeah, I see it right there.
I think right around there is where that, so it divides the driveway and the sort of back area behind the house, basically.
Yeah.
Um. And I don't, you know, I think it's cleaner. To do it at two hundred. That's my understanding of where two hundred is, um. And, you know, but I mean, you could even put in language to basically. Sort of delineates where it is, um, um. Through words, right? At the edge of that, of, of, on the site plan at the edge of that driveway. Um.
Well, it'd be better to put it on a plan as an actual number.
Disagree, but I mean, I think. I think. Not having. Um. The ability to. Mark that out exactly and make sure we are right. I believe that that's correct. And so. That's the concept, right, is that you're going just past that driveway and cutting that off, and then you've got the stuff behind. That driveway. Um.
You okay with the two hundred feet? You okay with the one hundred?
That's fine, yeah. It ends just past that driveway and it cuts across and it comes back and it, it cuts down from Will Doo's property, so. Just creates a rectangle about five and a half acres. So just be a little careful. We can't take new evidence. The clip, the camera's already closed, so, um, just be careful with.
Yeah.
That, but, you know, I mean, I, we can, I, I had discussions with. Various people and, you know, that's my understanding of how this was sort of batted around. We, we did talk about it at some point. But that two hundred feet, I think, is.
Yeah.
It's about the number that, that sort of. Puts out the house area and the front and leaves the back. Where the outbuilding is going to be anyways.
I think it has a nice buffer.
So, um. Um. Thoughts on that? The parties generally acknowledge that they've pretty much reached an impasse, or is it what they think? Where maybe one more time there's. My understanding, and I, I want to say this just like this, because I don't want there to be any pushback. My understanding. Is that there's a disagreement about. Um, how to. Document this and whether to get some kind of property interest. In this property with the, the butters would get some kind of property interest, whether it's. Um, enteasement or otherwise. That's what was being proposed. That was the sort of third rail that was not being crossed and so. Um, that's where the disagreement arose. Um, I think the idea is. It's trying to, they were trying to find something that. Could be. That would run with the land. Permanently. Without. Um, the ability for modification by the planning. Right? Because if we put something in the. Estate lot special permit, it is. Theoretically amendable, moderate, you know, modify, mobile by a. Us or subsequent planning board. Now.
Or even if their own, um. Covenant's changed. In a couple of years. Is that no longer applied to them?
No, that's not, that doesn't apply to. That doesn't apply to. This would just be, this would. Run with the property to the extent that that estate lot special permit continued, right, and wasn't modified. So the estate lot special permit would simply just create that buffer. Of between the lots.
And it'd be permanent.
And it would be permanent.
With our special permit or with the other proposal of what you're talking about?
Uh, what I was talking, I mean, if you put it in a, I, I know, if you put it in a state law special permit, it would be a condition in there that would run with the property, right? And it would only be used.
Right, but I'm saying if we establish it and say that within this two hundred feet buffer, there can't be any livestock to follow. Right? That's what we're talking about really, in essence, right?
Correct.
And in three years, the Meadow Lane HOA. Gets rid of that. On their own accord. Are we then suggesting that Mr. Kuliak can't then come in and request a special permit change because now you're, he's being held to a standard? That was put on him in order to accommodate. This other thing. And if that other thing goes away. I would presume we wouldn't want to prevent Mr. Kuliak from coming in and requesting a special permit modification.
I. I think. That could be, they, they could certainly come in for a modification. I mean, I, I, there's no, nothing preventing them from coming in for a modification later on. I'm not, you know. I think.
I was wanting to see, because we were talking about a mechanism to not allow it to change. I want to make sure that.
That was the point.
Okay. We're not proposing that we. Put some mechanism in and.
I'm not. That, the discussion from the. At least one abutting property owner was to put in a mechanism that would make it permanent without the ability of the planning board to change it in any way, shape.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I do think they could come in. I do think. A couple of things about that. Um. Um. It would. Allow. So really the passage of time, right? And you could see. How this plays out. You would have someone who's living in the neighborhood for three years and have neighbors that they've dealt with and. Presumably have, you know, um. Thought about how they're gonna. Deal with that and, and deal with the neighbors and what they. Want and don't want and try to be a good neighbor, right? So. I think that having that period of time. Is a useful. Thing to have. Um. So that may change things in, in however many years it is when you come in here. It doesn't, I don't necessarily think it. Definitely does, but it may. Right? But it would be something that you would look at again. Down the line. Um. So. You know, I mean, I think there, I, I just don't think there's anything you can do other than. Trust that the planning board will look at this in a reasonable way. And if there's a modification that comes along down the line, they'll look at it in a reasonable way. I don't.
So be here, so.
Yeah, well, let's go with that. Um, so, um. I, I, you know, I'm not sure there's anything more you can do, especially with this board as currently constituted. I'm not sure there's anything more we're gonna. Come to some agreement on, um, this seems reasonable to me. Uh, it's reasonable enough that I think I'm willing to come up my. Position of where I would otherwise. Intellectually fall, um. To sort of say, this is a reasonable. Yeah. Almost agreement between the. Neighbors and let's put it into it.
I agree with that.
This is. So. Um. Any other discussion about that?
How do we move forward?
We gotta open up a document and start typing.
Well, really good.
Yeah. Yes. Hours on.
We already filed it down. We've already gone through and we'll go through it quickly again, just to make sure everybody can look at it as a whole, um. You know, as we're putting in conditions.
Can we revote on that?
We haven't, yeah, we can revote on the, we're gonna create a, we're, we're gonna modify this decision. And the way we just discussed, we'll get it to the point where we're comfortable with it and we'll vote on it. And, and it goes wherever way it goes. So. Um, again, this is sort of the idea. If you get to the. Wherever you can get to and then. Where there's pushback, you stop and then you vote on it and see if there's an agreement among enough people. Um, all right, so. Let me, am I able to share?
Let's make sure you.
I am now.
Well. Right.
The answer is I am. I just need to find one. Second. Okay. I'm gonna have that. Try it again. There we go. I can get to it eventually. All right. So this is the, what we talked about before, state law special permit and site plan approval. Land east of Hillside Road at Meadow Lane. That's just map thirty-eight, parcel eleven. Findings and decision of the planning board. All right, so we went through this. Um. But let me just. Quickly go through it. Anything with one through five that anybody wants to? Adjust or feels it needs to be adjusted. Why this is September twentieth, huh?
You got ninety days.
Ninety days. No, 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 we stopped.
From the, from the, oh, we stopped on the twenty fifth of October.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got plenty of time, but.
Lots of time.
It's just, they'll be going on.
All right, time.
Um. So. I Jessica is not, does, well. No, I take that out, right? Because you're gonna end up not being a designated voting member on the.
Right.
Uh. Yeah, you were designated because someone was missing, right, and read in, I think. I forget who, Dick, Marcus?
Missing.
Sutton.
Mr. Sutton.
Was it Sutton? That was, okay.
Notarized, uh.
All right.
You had that in front.
Yes, all right. So the findings, uh, well, section A, general, one through four, anybody have anything that needs to be changed on that? Okay. Go through the special permit criteria quickly, um. One through six, anybody have any changes that need to be made on that? All right, we'll go down to seven through sixteen. Okay, seventeen as well. All right. Specific findings. One through. Seven. Okay. Go on to eight as well. All right. Decision and. Terms and conditions for number one. Down to number two. Right.
Are we gonna have any kind of a revised plan?
Uh.
That's number five. You're referencing, uh. October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, this is for the driveway. We'll put in a. When we get to that condition, we'll put in something that they submit a.
Submitter.
A plan that has the.
Yeah.
The, um. Condition put on it as well as the delineation of. That buffer zone. But we'll talk about that in a minute. Um. All right. So. Yeah.
Last day.
No, you are.
Number nine, revised site plan incorporating the above terms and conditions.
Yeah, so this will, so that we already have it in there. So we'll put the terms and conditions above that.
Above it.
And. It will be incorporated.
Yes.
Um. Yeah, all right, so, uh. I'm gonna put this, why don't I put this here? Um.
So these are. Terms and conditions here that we've been looking through.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, um. I'm gonna pull up the map for a minute so I can. It is north, right? It is facing, it is.
Yes, oriented.
Oriented north. Thank you. That's the word I was looking for. Um.
There's some introduction language. There shall be. Could say there shall be a. Two hundred foot buffer and describe them. Two hundred foot buffer and describe them. Okay, anybody else got any words? There shall be. Let it be so.
Why she's the word buffer, that's like, well, someone thinks of something better, buffer area.
They use in here buffer zone in this item thirteen here. Between. The estate law and. And then you could refer. I was just taking off that. Note there's any good words in the agricultural. Right to farm. Yes, uh, our forties. Legalistic mind going to town over there.
Livestock.
I was just using the word that was already used in forty B, I think forty B, in our forty zone. I mean, well, the phrase is actually keeping up saddle or riding horses and other farm animals.
That's allowed.
Do you think livestock is a better? What is livestock? I mean, I don't know. Well, let's, let's, let's keep going and we can come back to that, I mean, it gets something down, so we have a monster.
It does say farm animals, yeah, other farm animals.
Maybe.
You never know what kind of completion might be saying.
Thank God we have a reasonable building inspector.
As delineated on the such and such site plan. On the approved site plan, something to that effect. From the northern property line. Yeah, it is property. Into the subject. We could say estate lot, that's what it is, it's an estate lot.
Is there any real reason why that needs to stop?
I'm used to what?
Needs to stop. I understand, but is there any real reason why it needs to? No, I, yeah, uh, yeah, I'm just thinking.
What is a rectangle, right?
Can you do the northern property line from the. Farthest east point and it will extend two hundred feet, whatever that. Distance is along the northern property line.
I think you just go two hundred feet down from the north, so, so it goes, it starts, it goes like this, 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 and then it cuts down a little bit. So I think you go two hundred feet down from over here, and you just go straight across to hit the. The other side. I mean, I get that, it extends past a little bit beyond. Stagecoach, right, and some of those properties, but I just think it's. And because we're, because then we're, you tell me, where do you, where do you, where do you drop it down, I mean, I just don't know. I think you just go straight across, I think it's just easier that way. I mean, it's only going probably another five hundred feet or so. I just, I can't think of a better way.
Oh, you mean, oh, this, the property line goes, oh.
You know what I mean? So I think you just go.
Yeah, I'd measure the two hundred feet then, yeah, down from the northwest corner and then, and then straight across.
Due east to the.
I think we are getting it described pretty adequately. Said buffer zone shall extend twenty, two hundred feet south into the parcel from the northwest corner of the property. I would say and then. Due east. I take out that extent. I'm not a, oh, and then extend due east to the eastern property.
My daughter did just do the urban trail, so maybe.
Of the estate, of the estate lot.
That's the distance that we're extending it from the edge of the Duke's property.
Probably another five hundred feet or so.
So five hundred by two, so fifteen thousand square feet. Additional.
No, because it comes down, it, so here, um.
I can't see here.
No, no, so, um.
Yeah, I thought it went all the way across, but it shows another angle on that.
It goes like this. So you, this is straight, 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 and then it comes down, so. You come down two, you come down two hundred. But if you just, you just kind of, you're gonna get this little triangle. Over here, I, I just think that.
It may be easier for us right now to not take the five minutes to. To elucidate in the decision exactly where we're looking for it to go, but we're taking away property. Usage from somebody and, and an attempt to keep it away from property line that isn't.
So let me ask you this question.
I'm just, if we can say from the back of whatever the. The Duke's property line.
Alright, if you're, if the idea is to put a two hundred foot buffer between the residential properties. And. Any use that's on this. Why would you start at the edge of the Duke's property so that? You would not have a buffer if you went just to the east. Right, you could, you could be in that corner. You'd have the Duke's property right here, coming down, you could be right here, and there's, there's no buffer there, right? That, that doesn't make sense to me. You've got to at least go two hundred feet this way, farther past the Duke's property. To get a two hundred foot buffer. Appropriately, I think. Because otherwise, you could be one foot off of the Duke's property in that corner and there's no buffer. Is that, I mean, am I right on that, or?
I think so.
I, I get what you're saying, I mean, I get, you don't want to go too, but I mean, I just, if you're drawing the line down, if this is the property line. For the dude right here, and you draw it straight down, you could go right there. And do whatever you want, right, and that is not really. This not, this not, the purpose of a two hundred foot buffer is completely destroyed right there, isn't it? I mean, I think you'd have, at least have to go two hundred feet this way before you come up. Um, that, it is just, I don't know how to write that, honestly, I'm not trying to go. Too far and it's undeveloped land, it's, it's not gonna do anything, I don't think. Right, it's a, it's a triangle at the end of the day. It's, it's, it's not worth. Uh, so. Alright.
When it gets over to the other, on the east side, is it a hundred feet? Down?
Uh, I don't know.
So we draw that. Comes across here. Is this a hundred feet down? In my explanation. This is the R forty. It is not less than a hundred feet of any street. Oh, you got a six? What are we thinking about another one? What, what's six?
The, um. Um, personal use. We gotta incorporate that into.
You mean allow personal use?
The, the use. I think you need to. Have in the decision that the use to be done, the farm use. Or the farm animal use is gonna be personal use, right, because that combines with the R forty.
We come on commercial.
Non-commercial. My understanding of how. Reads that and, and treats it as non-commercial use. I think that needs to be built into. The permit as well.
This is the restricted zone, so. The rest of it just flows. They can, number seven can be done anywhere on the rest of that property.
What if you, um. The question I don't know is if, well. If you're in an R forty zone, this is R forty, right? If you're in R forty zone and you put it into sixty-one, chapter sixty-one. You can then do. You can do whatever you want there. You could do commercial.
But sixty-one has excludes the hu- housing site, house site. There's certain requirements for sixty-one. Minimum acreage and, uh.
No, no, but. I don't think it's appropriate to have a commercial farm come off of Meadow Lane. So I think that that is appropriate to protect against off of Meadowland, and however we write it, I, I just don't think it. I don't, I, I don't want there to be an out to be able to say. Alright, so then we can't do this, but we're just gonna put it into sixty-one and then we'll do commercial, we can do a commercial there and it come off Meadow. I don't know, I don't know how those two get.
How low commercial activity will be allowed on the property?
And that's fine, I mean, I don't. I just think that they're. I don't think so, I don't think. But I think there's better, I think. So the answer is this, I think, and I think Mark thinks, well, I don't know if Mark thinks this, but. Whether chapter, whether forty, are the R forty bylaw. Would control over. Sixty-one, so like the, the idea that you can only use it for personal use. It, you can't then turn our R forty into. Sixty-one land and do commercial farming on it necessarily. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but at a minimum. I think a, a state lot permit. And what's in an estate lot permit, according to Mark, wouldn't. Trump over. Sixty-one, right, and so.
But sixty-one is a tax program. You get a reduction in your real.
It increases what, yeah, but you're changing the use of the property and getting a, a reduction in the tax. Well, you're not necessarily changing the use, but you are delineating.
Well, you're committing not to using it for residential. When you go in that tax program. You're committing not to develop it for.
Correct, so what is there to prevent you from cutting off the back of this property and, and putting it into sixty-one?
Nothing.
Okay, so then on si- on sixty-one land, you can do commercial farming. Correct. I mean, is that, does that seem appropriate to come off of Meadowland and do commercial, again, I'm not saying that, oh, it's doing this, I'm not, I'm just. Covering the scenarios of.
Somebody would subdivide or cut off that back end property.
I just wanna, while we're writing these decisions, I want to make sure. Options, it's not gonna be in there.
Right to farm?
No, that's in the general. Bylaws, I can't remember what number it is, but it's not. I just want to make sure that we're not missing a scenario where. You can. But if there is another way to. To access property and use it, I think that's fine, again, I just don't think that coming off a cul-de-sac at the end of a residential subdivision is. Where you put a. Commercial farm, right, I mean, I, I just think that that's. I don't think that that's.
It have to be a pretty extraordinary case where they have to cut off that back half of the property, have some kind of an easement or access agreement through the. Existing two hundred foot, whatever, I get it, okay. We'll just use this.
And I don't want to prevent. Use back there, if I mean, it's a lot of wetlands, but to the extent that I can do farming or whatever back there, uh, personal use or whatever they want to do back there. Great, and maybe you come off a different way to use some of that land. A different street or something, great. But I don't necessarily think. The scenario where you could get back there. And do something commercials seems feasible to me if you use sixty one and I I'm not sure. I think that's appropriate in this. Coming off of Meadow Lake. Uh, again, it's it's it's. It's not a likely scenario, it's certainly not something that's proposed, but I just want to make sure that we're thinking through the. Various things before we. On a very large property. Grant an estate lot that then can morph in somewhere. That's all. It's not like an estate lot that's, you know, an acre in size, that was just putting in a state lot on, it's it's this is a. Much more substantial piece of property. Um, and only is developed. Um, you said five acres is that is that cut out, right? Could no correct, but I mean it's. So you only got about a couple of acres that's really sort of developed at this point in time, um, on a thirty something. Acre. So there's a. Bunch to work with there and it's not to say that they can't do something with it, it's just I'm not sure that. The idea of commercial. Use coming off of Meadow is the appropriate.
Use in accordance with the R forty, you know.
And so I think you protect against that by putting it in the estate, because again, if this is a non-buildable, non-useable. Lot at this, you know, for this right now, when you're granting the estate lot permit, I think those conditions. Run with that property. And so if you say no commercial use off of Meadow Lane, even if you limit it that way. I think that that's. An appropriate. Way to do.
We'll just use a lot of this text here.
Point to the R forty, the person.
Yeah.
Twenty five twelve seven there?
Yeah, seven. Just say, uh.
I'm not opposed to that, that would limit it to our forty personal type use. Or would we want to allow? Chapter sixty one-esque type uses, but just not accessible. You know, if you want to come in from the back some other way. Carve off that section in some future time. Whatever farming you want to do. Think that that doesn't bother me, I don't think. What's about a something it didn't get complicated.
Uh, recreation. Sixty one, sixty one is forestry, sixty one A zag. Sixty one B is recreation. Just say.
I'm gonna, I how about this?
Estate lot.
If this scenario was to occur where they carve off this back section. Then we have to come back to. Will they have to come back? Again, I don't think they do necessarily and I but it gets a little gray and I just, I want to make sure we've sort of game theory this. I mean, is it just a simple?
Uh, don't say nonbuffery. The whole, I mean, the whole area.
Well, no, no, but they're not able to carve off, they're not gonna be able to carve off that front area with the house. No, 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 they're not gonna be able to carve it off to use that commercially, right? You know what I mean? That's gonna stay residential, that's gonna stay. That's why I said the non-buffer area, but um. But I I can write that differently.
Yeah, I would write it down, just say no commercial use.
Okay, well, but here's what here's where I want to check again. Okay, so they can't have home occupation?
Right, right. Oh, home occupation is not commercial use.
How's that?
Don't we do home occupations all the time?
I mean, it's it's.
So she wants to make some goat more soap and sell it. Are the residents of Meadow Lane going to stop their?
See, that's that's technically illegal. You're that's a commercial use, you're not allowed to do that in an R forty zone. You're not, I mean, whether it's anybody reports it or not, it's a different story, but. That is a commercial use, that is a not, that's not a personal use. The second you start selling that, it is not a personal use.
Oh, man, I'm trouble.
It just isn't.
I'm in trouble, no jelly.
It's free, it's free, so it's not.
No jelly.
Outside of the buffer zone. You know, farm animals be kept consistent with one eighty five twelve. Which has all the words in there about. Personal use of small flock and all that kind of good stuff.
That's good.
Or farm animals can only be kept in accordance with.
Outside of the above. Buffer zone. Da 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 da. As Mr. Spinner was. I thought we had customary home occupation. Defined, I don't see it in the definitions.
He was right by it.
Thank you, where'd you see that?
It's a page. So the definitions of one eighty five.
Yeah, I must have an old book. Do you like a reprint for Christmas? Yeah, well. I'm a short timer.
Wait, say that again? What is the bylaws?
The definitely the definition of a home occupation is a vocation trade, small business craft, art or profession. That can be conducted with an eight dwelling permit or accessory building. And then over in one eight in the R forty stuff, it says customary home occupation says define in article two definition of one eighty five. Or therein are among the permitted uses.
Right, but then. And so that's fine, that's fine, but then when you get into. Farm animals and keeping a farm animals, you can only do that for personal use. Modified so they can, you know.
So you wrote rewrote or just stuck in? Keeping on small flock post. Button paste is a wonderful thing. Yeah, that's the R forty zone, so it is twenty five, yeah.
Is the last. The stuff about the hundred feet.
That's in.
I know it's in there, but it starts to talk, I mean, it's kind of.
And I looked it up, it's from any dwelling. It's not the property line is from any dwelling.
Ah, okay. I mean, this this is irrelevant, right? So it has to be a hundred feet from any dwelling.
Any dwelling.
Well, actually, that doesn't matter either. Well, yeah. We can just leave it in there, it doesn't.
Yeah.
I mean.
From the actual from the dwelling.
Yeah, I mean, but you have then you have a two hundred foot buffer, so you're.
Well, on the one side. You don't have, you only have seventy five on the other side, on the edges.
Alright. What do we think? I mean, that is the language from R forty, just so.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, I think that works. So should we clarify the? The buffer zone? Because there's other buffer zones. You see where we are on the third line? Permit it outside of the buffer zone.
Yeah, paragraph five buttons.
Described in. Condition five or something to that effect. Thank you.
You're good?
I think I'm good.
That was good? How do you feel about it?
Agreeable to the applicant.
She's just not going to any farmer's markets anymore, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, just so you know, I I delineate. My personal opinion about it. With. Something that I see as a sort of a reasonable. Compromise that was at least discussed, if not agreed upon, but discussed right between. The various property owners. So if I'm forced to make a decision my myself. Uh, you know what I've. What I've said, right? But this is to me. Seems like a reasonable compromise to sort of. Um, allow for. What is an appropriate use in that area? And in. You know, I. I think is a decent. Compromise to what is an issue that comes up every single year in this town. Between right to farm and. Subdivisions and those types of things, I mean, it just comes up in a different manner. Every year. So I think this is a reasonably decent compromise for this. You're not gonna agree with it, that's.
Does not matter.
She wasn't designated, right?
She was at.
She was at one time.
Alright, anything else that needs to be changed on this before we move forward, I got a question.
How many votes do we do? Just one? Well, thirteen.
No, that's gotta change, alright. So. Do I hear? To um. Grant an estate lot special permit. And site plan approval. Subject to the terms and conditions um contained in this written decision.
Marcus Phelps will move.
For Charles singer second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Dory, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
For Charles singer, I.
Okay, and because I never know what we're supposed to do.
Signed electronic.
Do I hear a motion to uh? Do I hear a motion to uh accept the written decision as written?
So moved, Marcus Phelps to make a motion to accept the written decision as written. Oh, Mister Hudson made that motion. Hudson made the motion.
Alright, and who seconded?
I'll second it.
Alright. Michael Dory, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Alright. Alright.
Was that a?
Enjoy the night off.
While I'm taking a uh while I'm just finishing this up, uh if y'all want to look at um. That uh draft decision, always go through that quickly, it's pretty much. The same.
Which one was this? Is this the solar? Oh, this is shake. Did we do the solar one already?
We did.
Okay. So this is shake their farm.
There's a little change in language about the location of Maunder Malls, just reflecting some of the destruction. Just simply renovate.
I'm gonna save this. Save it into today's. Say that again, who who are we talking to, Dick?
Say they're done. But. That's been the case, we required a. Fresh posting that needs renewal.
Alright, so here's the written decision, everybody get a chance to um. Put through it. Anybody got? Like anything else, so we'll.
Direction on what when to give the site plan updated and stuff like that.
Um, just coordinate with. This guy right here. Um, you got a twenty day period period. As I'm sure you know.
No, it'll start tomorrow.
It includes the holidays, right?
So just repeat with that admin calendar for. Field period, but a little. Thing every day.
Yeah, in any event.
The first paragraph.
Yes.
The third. The third. Line. For any transfer to a nominee, I don't quite understand, is that something you've always said?
No, it's um um. Basically.
We'd have to approve any transfer to someone else. But we don't say that really well. I don't know.
Well, it's.
Why do we say to another party?
It's a legal phrase, I mean, it makes sense to me, but it's it's.
Why don't we say to another party? Ready transfer to another party.
That is fine.
Thank you. We had a party. We had a party and you didn't come. You were a nominee to come, but you didn't arrive.
This is unfortunate.
Instead of nominee. To another party.
I like your legal use of nominee, but.
Hardly mine, I I regret. Hardly mine, I I regret.
From our town council?
It was carried over from prior.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Anybody have anything with one through six? Okay. Seven through nine, I guess you can see.
Mike, if I see it. He just shook hands at the door.
Um, seven through nine, anybody have any changes? Hearing none. I will move to. Ten through fifteen.
Looks like ten was written by. Mister Goddard probably.
Uh, no.
It's impressive.
Perhaps it uh bears the hallmark of your work, Marcus, my question.
I don't think so. Three tons of lime per acre and a thousand pounds of ten, ten, ten fertilizer. Wow.
As well.
Something about fertilizer and then seeds, grass recommended for.
Oh, droughty.
But it's actually droughty.
I've seen it written that way. I've had that written, my last name written that way. Alright, eleven through eighteen here. You um. What were the changes again?
I'm sorry, related to uh monitoring wells.
Do all my pictures, Mike, and I still haven't.
Correct.
Is that on your Facebook page?
Oh, never. That's this would be in hell. Justin, it's in the Justin Case folder.
Uh, did you see that language?
No.
Sixteen.
Oh, here we go.
As soon as practical after final grading and stabilization of each section, so mind. In the opinion of the planning board.
But well, this, that's where.
This is an old, this is an old decision. No, this, no, you, this is what you put into.
From last meeting.
This is what you put into the folder, so this is not a decision. I I can't save you that much. Uh, what is, what, you know, nowhere.
So I'm sorry, it is second sentence in sixteen.
Monitoring well at each each excavation phase shall be monitored to meet from eight thirty. Could there be a? Minimum distance between them or no?
What was conditioned before was two monitoring wells, one of the. Well, it says northeast and southwest, I think it intended to say. Southwest, northeast along that screen corridor, too, well, between uh all the things. Right now, they have a multitude of. Monitoring wells. So saying one per phase, I think it's complied with as we said.
Is it reflected on the site plan?
Yes.
Can I put that in there?
Yes.
As shown.
I'm gonna put a minimum of one. Uh, operate, uh, what's, what's the word I wanna use? Working?
Operational.
Operational? I love that. Since that was the issue that we had, right? I mean, I can take out that site plan part. I I guess the site plan was a little. Fuck you, my memory certainly. I think they screwed up one, they flipped one. But so a minimum of one operational monitoring well in each excavation phase should be mod. Mod is to maintain a thirty percent average.
For the purpose of uh discussion, uh, not to draw this out any longer, it has to be phases one and two. If everybody recalls, there was the, what about the, the slope from the Pilcon property leading up? Uh, as well as its hundred foot buffer, the top of slope before you got to the subject property here. That was all dissolved as part of their agreement and in the original decision, um allowing. Some excavation to take place in concert. So phases one and two are relatively comparatively small. Maybe fifteen percent of the size of. For example, uh, phase two, if you combine phase, space three, if you combine the thing with one and two, they're very narrow strips. All I'm trying to say is that. The value of a monitoring well perhaps in these phases is not. As significant as it may be elsewhere.
Uh, and the only reason it sort of jumped to mind to me was because. I thought in the larger phases, they had it sort of in a corner. And so it's like, well, if that's in a corner. Then if you have it in a smaller phrases, at least it balances out, so you have a. Decent. Cross section of the property, you know.
There is a fairly broad spread. Uh, a few. Slices chopping, here's the pages, right? Phase four being the nor- most normally, there's a rather big pump of micromoles are there, uh, phase three of the low. Uh, essentially only has one closer to the line. Uh, and so that's, there's a fairly broad.
They went basically like.
Yes. Uh, northeast. Nothing within that initial, uh, that they do right there. As it sits.
So do you think the word operational is not?
Oh.
Yeah.
Functional?
Those are all.
Good words, right?
Yeah, I mean. The, the, if we're looking for data, right, to make sure we have a separation, then I don't have any problem with that term.
I just. I don't so much even care about the phases as I care about four somewhat. Equally spaced monitoring wells, or at least appropriately spaced monitoring wells over the side over the span of the property, right? I mean, that's all I. That's what they're there for. So. They should be cited appropriately. But monitoring, you know, that's all I care about. I don't care about the phases so much.
Fair enough.
But it just so happens that I think there is one in each, right?
With exception of phase two.
Oh, so this, we don't want it to write this way necessarily.
Yes.
So a minute, should we have a minimum of four operational monitoring wells? Or it could be even less than that, I suppose, but. A minimum number of operational monitoring wells. And and use some general language of, you know, properly cited or something, or something reasonably cited on the. Property or somewhere.
Sure, let any active excavation is keeping.
Right, I mean, I, it's hard to give them a hard time, but also to gift have something that if they really. You know, just let these things go to hell, that we can sort of say, no, you need to. You need to. For operational monitoring wells. Shall be. Reasonably cited. The. Property. Monitor to maintain. Yeah.
That's good.
Alright.
No.
So that's really the only change that we've made from the prior. Permit. Okay.
So, the first sentence of six. I wasn't sure what we were saying there, but it's, it's, it's been there a long, I don't wanna.
I didn't place it every success of the other, the second half, why not the first half?
Um, I mean, that's the, that's the post. Is that just trying to say what we say of where you get after you've done, you gotta grade it, you gotta seed it and all that good stuff?
Yeah, I mean, that's probably better put in a different paragraph, right?
Oh, sweet.
Well, how about this? Isn't that the?
That helps a lot, yeah.
I mean, they're two separate ideas, right?
Yeah, they are.
Oh, yeah, that work?
Stayed on the page, it worked.
Maybe because our tabs aren't.
Don't remind, I, I, I don't, I'm trying to hold myself. Yeah, so I. It is justified, and I am accepting that as sufficient. I'm not going into the tats.
There is one issue under filing. Never goes away. We haven't got out of twenty twenty one yet, now for twenty twenty. Hallelujah.
Now you're only giving John nineteen days files, thanks. Do you really wanna do that?
He can handle it.
Alright, I hear a motion to vote on this. Uh, to vote to. Renew the earth excavation structure permit for. Hudson Drive, shake the road.
Marcus Phelps will move.
We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Dory, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been high.
Okay.
We don't have to vote to approve the written, written?
Uh, now do I hear a motion to? Thank you, Marcus.
Written, writ.
To approve the um, to accept the written decision.
As written.
As written.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Richard, second.
Roll call, oh, Michael Dory, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been high.
Alright. And I just don't, I don't know the best. You're supposed to do a vote after the hearing. But then the proper way is to have the decision in front of you when you're voting. But at the same time, I think you still have to vote to accept the written decision, right? I mean, I think they're two separate votes, but I.
We approved it first, and then you have to approve the written.
The W can be known now from the D W W.
We're getting closer. This is next meeting, I think we're talking nifty second meeting.
We'll, we'll see about the next news. We got a couple of new, a bunch of new stuff coming too.
Yeah, you don't need to.
But Randy and I are scheduled to. Uh. Sit down next Monday. Go through this and a couple of other. Funny related items.
Okay. Alright, so we'll keep that on there, um. Master Plan Advisory Committee update.
Oh, yes, we have some updates. We have a meeting coming up on Thursday, December fifteenth. Of the Master Plan Advisory Committee. The agenda is out on that now, it's been posted. Uh, we'll be working moving forward in December and January. Ken Camilla from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission will be. Uh, meeting with various focus groups, which are smaller groups of. Uh, staff, town staff, and other experts in the various areas that the focus groups are working with. Uh. We have had a little problem with a couple members of the committee. They have not been participating. I look back at the attendance over the last six months. One resident member has not attended any of their meetings. There were twelve meetings. And another uh member has attended one of the twelve. So we'll probably at the meeting on Thursday be considering. Based on Mister Goddard's uh contact. With those individuals, whether or not we would replace them. We'd have to come back here. To you folks with a recommendation as to who. Were the replacements would be.
Glad you didn't complain about the.
It's been over a year, so you know. It goes on and on. Uh, and we are currently looking at the work plan for a fifty thousand dollar grant that we got from the state. Which will take us into phase two of the master plan. So we'll be reviewing that on Thursday. That's all.
Short term rental, um. Everybody get a chance to look at that?
Off to the board.
Everybody get a chance to look? Yeah.
There's a lot in there.
Start the hearing.
Right, uh, well, um.
In January.
Take a look, I mean, just take a look and see what's on for January. If, if there's, we're gonna be room, then throw it on there. If you have time to advertise, I'm not sure we do.
Uh, well, yes, we, we. We could.
You got holidays. You got holidays.
Even with the holidays.
Um, but just, uh, it doesn't have to be that first meeting, it can be the second meeting in January, um. Yeah, no, no, I mean, I don't, I wanna, I don't wanna drag it out too long, and we gotta. We wanna end it. Uh, closer to the. Uh, you know what, actually, why don't you put it on for um discussion?
Sure.
Put it on for discussion on the second meeting in January.
Okay. When is the town meeting?
In May, so. End of March, probably.
It's in May.
So, um. So why don't you put it on for discussion, second meeting? We can use February. To sort of work through. The bylaw and then.
Should we invite Randy Brown to come for our discussion?
Oh, he's gonna, he's got some nifty discussions then.
Oh, that'll be perfect. He'll be here anyway for nitties. He can just stay.
Um, alright, um.
Mike, I suggest, I don't know, it's gonna go well. You kidding? Dragged a building spectrum, because he's gotta be an enforcement officer, and he is not, doesn't wanna know about it. Says he doesn't have the time to deal with it. I'm just telling you what.
Well, I think we should.
There are options.
I think we should take it up. We'll discuss it uh uh in January. Um, we'll figure out. The, the. You know, the options, and then whether we wanna talk to Kyle or not, we'll figure it out.
Things want to tell us now, that some people say some of the issues are appreciative. Some are not offensive, so it goes back and forth.
You know, in my mind, I don't really care. To some degree, I mean, cuz it, you're, you're. You can't, those aren't permanent positions. He's not gonna be there forever, so you know, you're trying to structure something that will be there. And if you, if you feel it needs to be enforced, you get someone who will enforce it, right? I mean, so.
Yeah.
It, it's, to me, this is more permanent than the people who are necessarily enforcing it, so.
Fine.
Uh, you know, but I, I, if he has. I think it's certainly reasonable to listen to his thoughts about enforcement and, and. The time commitment to it and what else he has to do, and whether it's reasonable to, and how we factor that into the bylaw.
One of the issues I was brought up is. What happens if there's an issue at three o'clock in the morning on a, on a Sunday morning, someone like, people just having a party? You know?
That's a police issue.
Well, you know, there again, the, the, the police have been there. That's some issues, and it doesn't go any further than give a citation, never ends up in court, it just gets.
So, right, I mean.
And police say some of the issues.
Building inspector enforcement of this is not an emergent thing. It's gonna be a. Secondary thing that comes from a police report or comes from a complaint or comes from whatever. It's gonna be. Much more administrative than anything else. But again, I mean, it's like anything else, right? I mean, it's like the docs. I mean, it, it, whether you go and. Try to enforce it is. You know, it, it's a pain, but you, at some point, you gotta throw, you make the threat out there. It's like the. Water ban, right? At some point, you gotta put the threat out there and, and enforce it. Or else it's a, it's a useless threat, so.
I think one way or, or the other, you gotta get.
Correct, we've gotta deal with it one way or the other. Um. Make your time worthwhile. That you guys put into that, so, um, alright, minutes approval, October twenty fifth. Do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps, make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty fifth.
So I hear a second.
Your second, Richard Singer.
Roll call vote, Michael Dory, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
You're just singing, right?
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been high.
It's the four and I.
Minutes of November twenty nine.
I was suggesting that there should be a note under the seven thirty P M on Hudson Drive of. Mr. Button for Google, even though. On this particular date, we didn't really open it, but he wasn't at the meeting when he first opened it. Prevent he recuse himself, so.
Alright, so we'll throw in just. Alright, so we'll throw in just re- repeating, and we'll do it again, uh, this time too.
And they went for hamburger.
Yeah. So that's the seven thirty. At seven thirty.
Bringing in the local business, you know, yeah. Not just, they went to go. Smoke a butt gun. Fuck them up. You won't put that in it. Um, alright, do I hear a motion to approve November twenty ninth with that, um? Addition.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Uh, we'll do a roll call vote, Michael Dory, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard singer, I.
Dave's been I. Alright. Mister Sutton.
Nick will close the meeting.
I will second you. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.